There's no pledge allegiance today, so they're just going to call us to order.
Oh, we could.
You guys want to? We'll pledge a flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just for all.
So, uh, let's go to the first item, which is, uh, discuss the accountant situation. Have we talked to anybody?
So, I reached out to Markham again today, um, who apparently hasn't heard from her legal team yet. We just, um, were offered to have Lori Delolio, who was our accountant that worked for Markham before, come back to us exclusively, um, but there is a contract, there is a clause in her contract that doesn't allow her to. So, we just want to get that removed from her contract and, um, partner.
She probably has to sign a, you know.
Yeah, it says she will not, it's for competing and they're the one that wants to go, so. So, she said that, um, she told me this evening, like an hour ago, that she's okay with us moving in that direction, so.
Lori is or Tanya?
Tanya.
Yeah.
So, I'm just waiting to get the final, um, you know, in writing that she's allowed to do it and then Lori will help us. Um, and I have reached out to two other towns for shared accounting. Princeton uses, um, who's the other one that you had before, uh, duh.
Eric.
Eric Kincherf. And I looked at their budget and they only pay forty-nine thousand, but they also have a clerk, an AP clerk, for like twenty thousand. So, maybe that might be, you know, a better way if we have our own AP clerk, like a part-time clerk that just does all the AP and then we possibly get a firm to do the higher-end stuff.
Yeah, 'cause they.
That would be lower.
'Cause they quoted a lot more than.
They quoted seventy-eight.
Right. Less than what we're paying, but more than, yeah.
Right, and, and the thing is that, you know, they don't have to do the AP clerk work, that they probably pay their employees a lot more. So, that might be feasible, but I think that we're in pretty good shape right now as long as I get that answer from Tanya. Um, I do have a couple of other accountants and, and finance directors that do work in the Commonwealth that would be willing to also, you know, kind of bridge the gap. So, Jen knows a lot about year-end closing for accounting. So, if, I think another week or so, we'll, we'll have a definitive answer on Lori, which I hope, because she knows our system.
Well, yeah, I guess first is next Tuesday.
Exactly.
So, they need to get an answer.
Yes, so she didn't hear back, I'll, I'll reach out again tomorrow to Tanya to hopefully just be done with that and then be able to use Lori.
'Cause I know they did offer to stay on one month, just in case, but.
She did offer to stay on for one month, but I did, I do believe that that was just for warrants.
Yeah, yeah, just to, just to kind of get us through.
Yeah. So.
Where do we stand with our year-end closing stuff? Are we ready to go? Are we, how far off are we for having everything ready to close from last year?
Well, I, so Jessica's posted, she's up to date, um, through May, um, and, um, Jen is also pretty much there, she's doing everything she can. We were, it was recommended by DOR that we don't wait till the end of the year to start inputting things, so hopefully, um, Melanson at the time was doing that, but, um, I have to re, I did reach out to Elizabeth to see about that, but I have her back. She is our current accountant. Um, but I, so I have, I have asked her several things that I need to follow up on, um, and where they're at with year-end is definitely one of them.
Well, it's pretty important to our grants.
Absolutely.
That we make sure we stay on top of them.
Absolutely.
That was something they really hammered us about.
Each year that I've been here thus far, we've closed earlier and earlier, so I'm really on top of them to make sure that they're getting that all done, so we can then get our free cash shirt by, et cetera.
Did, uh, the accountant firm give a reason why they wanted to step away this quickly?
Uh, not necessarily, uh, they did, you know, put a little bit of blame on our staff, um, but I really believe that they have bec, they've gotten overwhelmed now that Markham has acquired them and everything is different and they lost some employees, not just Lori. And I think without telling us they're overwhelmed, I think they're overwhelmed. When I don't get answers back for two weeks from things that I've asked for, um, I don't know if they're not trained and capable to do it, or if they are too busy that they're not getting back to me. You know, all of the town year-end, I mean, I'm sorry, the town meeting, everything that happened at town meeting, like, I keep asking, where are, did you put it in stabilization? What is our current amount? What do we, we need to sit down? We need to know what's exactly in our pot, what's been allocated, and I haven't been able to, um, to get anywhere with that, so.
Have they come out since Lori left?
No, and this Elizabeth, I was told by Tanya, is in Florida, so we weren't getting a site this, uh, this month, so, um, you know, I, I don't, I don't think that it's our town staff that makes them want to walk away so quickly.
'Cause that's what I was told when I, when I spoke to Tanya, but it was, I mean, she was wishy-washy, I will say that, but it was the, you know, still being behind, and if that's still a problem, then we need to address that, too.
Um, so, she's not, she, she's reconciled.
Okay.
She works Saturdays usually, um, and so that's why I don't believe that it's our staff that's really.
Well, there's two sides to every story, so.
And, and I don't think they're going to say, "We're overwhelmed, we can't handle what we thought we could." Like I said, if I'm asking for these things for weeks and not getting an answer, um, that are really complicated issues, but that I simply don't know the software to go in.
We had issues with them before, you know, when they were Melanson, that, you know, they didn't.
Yeah, I mean, we are a week late on our warrant because they didn't do anything on the Fourth of July week. But I saw on the Fourth of July Diane was working and I was communicating with her, so I don't know. But we, we literally cut our checks a week late this week, this month, because.
Yeah, they did, not as good.
They're late, so.
Well, you said it's.
We definitely have to stay on top of it, though.
Also, if our clerk is working fifty, sixty hours to get the job done, we, we obviously have another problem because she should be able to do the job in the time that's given, and if she's not able to do it in that time, we have to, that means we gave her too much. I don't think she messes around up there, everybody says she's very professional and stuff like that, so, does she have too much on her plate?
Well, I honestly, I think that the training of the clerk is, um, you know, she needs to delegate more responsibility to the clerk. So, she's easing into that, but really delegating more, the clerk shouldn't just be doing very, very minor things, like collecting. You know, so that's what I think, it's been, she's slowly trying to train her to give her more responsibility.
Well, that'll.
I think that it's, I think the department is running well, I think, could everybody use more staff? I think everybody could, like, they could totally use like a payroll person only, but, you know, with the small towns, we do work a lot and we wear many hats.
But we don't only have, how many employees do we actually have? Thirty, five?
Yeah, I don't even know, I think it's around twenty, like, that work all the time.
I mean, that's, if we have a right software program and people are using it correctly, it shouldn't, that should be pretty seamless. I mean, basically put hours in and.
You're right.
Everything should, all that stuff.
But they tried to shift to that and there was a lot of pushback, so it's being done by that department. They get timesheets.
They, so they have to.
They're putting it all in.
And so the department has to be on the time?
Correct.
Yeah, so she does have to do everything, but, um, you know, I did say, let's at least put the salary to employees in there and if there's no vacation or no, then you don't need to worry about them, if you haven't, if they've got regular time on their timesheets, just move along. So, um, you know, everything takes time and I really do think that the staff there is capable and that it's adequate. I mean, again, I think we could all use extra help, but they're, they're working diligently, um, they're getting the treasurer work done, they're getting the collector work done, um, so, and they have many, many interruptions all day long. Still, even when I gave her a divider so people don't bother, um, you know, people just are constantly interrupting, so.
But limited hours at our offices actually aren't going to be a problem.
It's not just the public, I think it's people in town, it's like employees, too.
She's a collector, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to be, that's really got to be open the, the most, um, and it is, and it's, it's great. Um, people are coming in constantly because, you know, the first is coming up, so people have been coming a lot, um, and, and that's just the nature of the beast with that department.
But I think if we don't have a definitive answer about Lori by next week, I.
Then we gotta do something.
We gotta do something different, whether it's Eric or.
Well, I mean, we still have, we do have them if we want to extend it through August, which in the event that Lori is not allowed to do this, I think we would want to exercise that because, um, just to give us, to get somebody that knows VEDAR, that know, you know, that can just jump right in.
So then would we, would we do that and then maybe consider Eric for September first?
Possibly.
I mean, I think there should be a decision.
We definitely need a backup plan because if we're not available.
So Eric, you want to do it? You want to be the accountant?
Nah, no poss, I'm just saying, it's not me. Neil Braintree just shifted their auditor, they call her, um, and Renee Gregoire has taken it over, but I doubt that she can help us.
No, I'm asked.
Just getting her stuff together. And then there's, uh, never mind, I was going to say Katie Tyler, but.
No, she's not accounting, no, she wouldn't be able to do that.
She already bailed us out.
Yeah, she.
She did, she did.
Yeah, we definitely need to make a backup plan because if we're not, like I said, if we're not available to vote or something like that, we need to have something so you can, you have direction.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, the Lori Delolio is the ideal solution. Is, is that permanent? Is that temporary? Like, what are her thoughts on that?
Um, well, it would be temporary to permanent situation kind of thing, I think. I mean, I don't know how this is going to work, honestly, I know she knows it, she's done it all.
Right.
Um, she can do it, I don't know that we would want, you know, I don't know, I mean, we would, it's gonna ha, we're going to have to see. In the event they say yes, take her.
Yeah.
Whatever, we'll just let her play out, right, for the time being, see how it goes, see if it's working out, if it's saving us money. Um, you know, I really think that maybe an AP clerk is, is also something that we should explore because.
We're having trouble getting clerks.
Right, I think we need to.
Clerks are like, it's hard to find someone willing to work at eighteen hours without the benefits unless they have two other jobs that they're working the same way.
I mean, that might be a long-term goal, but I think that we need to just, we need to figure out.
Solve the next couple of months, I guess.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and if we get Lori back, we find out from her after a while, after a couple of weeks, how, if she's willing to go the distance. And then see if that's possible, but if she's not, then we have to be looking while she's helping.
I think it's really important to keep in mind, too, with the whole Markham leaving us, that, you know, Lori wants, Lori is willing to come back to work for Hardwick, so I think that says something.
Yeah, no, great.
I think by August fourteenth, I could have, uh, something in front of you to, for a permanent solution to vote on.
Good. So, Markham will stay, let me just run this through, so say Lori can't help us, Markham will stay for another full month?
Through, through August.
So, Plan A would be Lori, Plan B is Markham.
Would possibly Kincherf, or maybe we, maybe we, I don't know if there's an accountant out there.
I'm just trying to get through the months, so let's, let's just try to say, if that gives us enough time for our next meeting to, to say, okay, this is, this is what's happened and this is, okay, these are our next steps.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that's our K to you?
Yep, yep, we have to be working on it.
Yeah, I think that's.
Until we're permanent.
Right.
Right.
But at least we know, okay, the next month we have coverage, so.
Okay.
I think that's my, my personal concern right now is.
Yeah, to just make sure we're covered, and we still have to make sure that checks get out and everything else, so.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
That is concerning.
And then, and then, you know, Jessica just needs to, her department just needs to focus on being ready for year-end once we know who's going to be actually doing that, so that they can.
Absolutely.
Hit the ground rolling, you know, running for, for, you know, for obligations to USDA.
Different firm, we're gonna have to.
Be ready, yeah.
Exactly, they're going to want all of our information.
Everything, right, yeah, okay.
Comfortable with all that?
Yep.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, point number of election workers.
That's the list there if you want me to make a motion.
Sure.
And this is from Ryan, um, I would make the motion to appoint the following people for, um, election workers. So, the election worker warden, Joyce Power, turned to twenty-twenty-four. Election worker clerk, Marilyn Shorrock, to twenty-twenty-four. Election, the following are just election workers, Nancy Lemoine, Joanne O'Connell, Wendy Boladaisy, Gail Ashes, and Frank Hanson, all for twenty, all until twenty-twenty-four.
I would second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, next to our business, Scott, your superintendent report, please.
Yep, things are running good, obviously we have, uh, some heavy flow on Gilbertville due to the rains, but nothing we haven't handled. The cannabis mill is now tied into the sewer system, I can send that to you tomorrow in an email, so.
Okay.
We can put them on our billing. Yeah, and our generators serviced, which was the major service for the year, oil changes, et cetera. We do have Jason Girallati interested in running that lineup at Eagle Hill that we discussed from the air release valve. He's looking at starting that within the next month, shouldn't be a big deal.
Did he give you a somewhat of a price?
He didn't.
I'm sure it'll be less than what you reported.
Yeah, sure. We did take in thirty-six thousand gallons of leachate a few weeks ago from the landfill. Now, that information was submitted for billing.
That's been happening regularly for years, is that true?
Yeah, we, we've been getting four loads maybe every two months for the last, well, since I've been here. I wasn't sure if you wanted to discuss the future of the leachate resident in regards to that new Casella proposal.
I don't know.
It's probably premature.
Yeah, at this point.
Do you have anything from ethics here?
I already turned in my disclosure that I will not be participating in anything.
I'll talk to you later.
And I think you all got my email about Blue Heron, my, my thoughts on that.
Do we have a meeting with them face-to-face tomorrow, two o'clock?
Yeah, is it?
Here?
Is it tomorrow?
Let me look that up a little bit.
I think it's two o'clock. Is that here?
I think that's what they were missing. Anything else, Scott?
That's it, I, I just want to reiterate, I don't think we should hire Blue Heron in any, in any aspect, it was a waste of money last time. That's their track record with us.
So, we have our old business.
I don't have anything, I do have a couple of signatures for you, but I don't know, where's that open in? I just want to say whatever. I don't have that all, just need the signatures for the warrants and then, um, Kevin is applying for two grants and needs your signature on each front page.
Speaking of grants, I'm going to hope that we can get some paper on my little EMPG grant. I need to turn in the, to get the town reimbursed and get my numbers squared away by the second week of August. I just need kind of a ledger or a record of.
Okay, I can get that for you. Did you give me the account number? I think you did, right?
Yeah, and I'll come in and sit.
I think that's the only one you have to sign, I mean, there's a second one, but. Nope, it's, it's, it looks exactly the same down there, yeah.
Right back, basic share.
Thank you.
All right, this is about the Congress.
Okay.
All right. You listening to any of the Morris Scholarship stuff?
Oh, you know what, I printed out the wrong one, I'm sorry, it's on the new agenda. I printed out the wrong agenda for you guys, sorry.
This is off.
That's off my town government, this is like off with the letter heading.
I mean, that's part of old business, so.
It is on there, because it was posted to my town government.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's what I sent you, just a few minutes ago. So, it's just a summary of the, what you authorized before and it's been done. You've got one of these.
Yeah, I do, yep, thank you.
Attached to it is, is a description of the original terms of the endowment from Elizabeth Morris for the purpose of scholarship. I had described to you some things before about the amount of money and where it was and the history of, of stipends being awarded or not and then I learned some had been, and recently Nicole recovered a file that showed a number of others have also been given over the years, so, you know, I don't know, there's probably five or six different times that awards of five hundred and maybe thousand bucks have been given from the Morris Scholarship Fund to local college-bound residents. The money, you'll remember that there was a twenty thousand dollar CD that at one point must have been moved to East Hampton Savings Bank in order to make a higher rate of interest, and it did, for a while, and then they did what most banks do, was roll it over at a not-so-good rate, like quarter percent, and, um, so, my suggestion and your agreement at the time was, why not move that to where it's going to earn a reasonable amount of money? So, we, and then also there was another account, six hundred and sixteen bucks at Country Bank that was Morris Scholarship interest. So, at some point, that, that's just been sitting there for some years now. So, um, what we did is, what Jess did with my guidance a little bit and your authorization was to close both of those accounts out, so we closed out six hundred and sixteen dollars and change from the Country Bank, Morris Scholarship interest account, and sent it along with the full proceeds of the East Hampton Savings Bank CD, giving up the quarter percent, um, in order to get a better CD rate, so that was twenty thousand eight forty-nine with some interest. This money can, is divided properly into two things, the non-expendable twenty thousand dollars of principal is first given, and then all the interest that gets earned, um, over time, which right now is fourteen hundred and sixty-five dollars. So, there's now two li, two items at Unibank, first is twenty thousand dollars principal now in a four-point-six percent fourteen-month CD. I know that got it, she sent it, but they didn't tell us which day it was set up, so can't tell you the exact maturity date, but it'll be late July of next, excuse me, that's a mistake, it'll be late September, fourteen months, right? Late September of next year, as a non, as a non-expendable principal, the rest of it, that fourteen hundred and sixty-five bucks is liquid in the Unibank Government Money Fund that we use for so many things, and, um, that's expendable income, so I'm just suggesting here that you, however you do such things, you might want to make a note that the fourteen hundred and sixty-five that's liquid now will still, of course, be liquid in the spring of next year, when I imagine is when you want to entertain applications.
Out there.
Yeah, and, and find a deserving, uh, student or two, whatever you decide at the time, but it'll be liquid. It'll be a couple of months, then, it'll be September before the twenty thousand and what is it, obviously another, about a thousand bucks at that point of interest, when that comes in, so that'll set you up for the next year to do it again, thousand, five hundred, whatever you decide.
Nice.
So, somewhere on the calendar, that'll be in there, but, uh.
Thanks for doing this, you did this for the library and it was a win.
Yeah, so. Thank you, no, I'm happy to, I, you know, it's like insurance companies, you don't want the, the banks to make any more money than, and then they need to, right, at our expense.
That's the truth.
So, yeah, so that was one thing, and that's, that's what I had asked, well, I had asked Nicole if I could update some things here, and this was one of them, and she thought maybe that was the only one, but I don't know. So, there, I had some other stuff, it's more the planning board thing, so if you want me to talk about that, I'd like to also, wouldn't take too long.
Is it from the planning board or just from?
From the planning board, yeah, yeah.
It's a key round.
Okay.
Okay. Well, there's, there's really, um, three things.
About the land.
It's about the land.
Only, only, only a part of it, it's about, it's about bylaw processes, really, but first, um, I'm just going to say we're, you know, we've taken up what Terriman Walheim and the rest of the crew there before at the planning board had worked hard to do, put together all the bylaw update proposals. They were sent in April to the board, you turned them around at the time, um, the planning board did not act on them within sixty-five days or whatever was required, but there were also new things to add, we're considering a couple other bylaws over there, but it's pretty soon, I think, you'll see that there's something in there perhaps about short-term rentals or excessive drilling units and some more language about a couple others and a bunch of technicals. So, that kind of stuff is coming back to you in due time, it's been fun working with Word and Pages and all this stuff, but.
I feel your pain, they had to retype the entire personnel policy because it couldn't be fixed.
Yeah.
I get it.
Anyway, that's, that's coming along and the process, as I've learned and, um, as you all would know and as Eric passed on to us his planning board before, that people refer to, the process is obviously one that we tend to follow, so this will come back to you and then it comes back to the planning board supposedly in fourteen days and then we've got sixty-five days to start hearings and, uh, as a maximum, and then you do the hearings, close the hearing, you've got twenty-one days if you need it to decide something, and then it, you know, then it goes to, uh, to the special town meeting where zoning changes require the two-thirds, as you know, vote, and other, other things don't, so there's certain ones that are the majority.
And this is for, the, this is for all the bylaws that we looked at earlier this year?
Yes, and, and a couple more, the love part of, of zoning bylaw changes. And there's one other one, which is the, um, the Mullen Rule, which as you know is something that's used by many towns that allows, um, a member of any board, that's specified, is covered by this, any board member can miss one meeting, but not more than one of a hearing, and they can then come back into the hearing later and vote, participate and vote if they've only missed one, but they, there's a pretty tight process they have to do. First, the town has to adopt the Mullen Rule, just pretty straightforward, and yet the town never has, according to Ryan. People kind of thought it had, but maybe it never was, there's no evidence it ever was, it's a simple thing to do, and that will allow whatever boards the town wants to be able to use this Mullen Rule exemption to do some. Then there's some procedural things that say the, the member who missed one has to certify that they have, well, first they have to actually see a videotape or an audiotape of the proceedings or a transcript of one of those. It's pretty clear that minutes are not enough, you can't just look at the minutes from a meeting. And then you have to testify that to the town clerk, at the beginning of your hearing, you have to say so-and-so is here with us because they have filed using their one exemption for this purpose.
You can do this once, you can do this once.
Yeah, you're right.
A member. Only has one time to do that.
That's right, yeah, you can't do it a second time. Now, that of course only matters if you have a hearing that somebody missed and then it's continued for a vote or another hearing or whatever, and that, and the person that missed the first one can't get in, you know, unless he's done this process. So, um, it suggests to me that the town should adopt this, the Mullen Rule, which is a simple, warm, majority thing. this, the Mullen Rule, which is a simple law and majority thing at a meeting, but it could be the same meeting as we do these other bylaws.
Town meeting. It's a town vote.
Yeah, right, right. So my, you know, I'm just thinking for convenience sake and expense and everything, might as well be rolled into sort of whatever bylaws we're all ready to have hearings on and then vote on. So at that point. And Ryan thinks that's the way to do it. And it suggests too that in actual hearings by any, this is Judy Kaptora hearings, so it's not just regular meetings necessarily, but that doesn't really matter. But in the hearings, they would best be videotaped or audiotaped or both or whatever, so that a missing member can use this to get back in. Otherwise, they technically can't, even if it's been adopted, because they wouldn't be able to see the required amount of information and testify to it. So that's where that is. And I think you'll see that. I think, I know the Planning Board wants to do that, and it'd be your decision or other boards, which other boards want that to cover them. The warrant could say the whole town wants to adopt this, that any committee doing such, having hearings would have the same thing applied. Some towns elsewhere have said, there's only three people on the board. We don't really want it, you know, to have that in that case. I have no opinion on that, but you can spell it out, you know.
There's only a few boards that can have a public hearing. So that would probably simplify that. I mean, Board Health and.
And then Board Health, Conservation, right?
Well, Conservation is a commission, but they have public hearings.
Right, and the Select Board. So maybe that's all. So it probably doesn't have to be spelled out what you do unless one doesn't, you know what I'm saying? I think you can just say the town adopts this for all such hearings from place.
Yeah, and that, you're just going to put that on with the rest of the zoning bylaw.
Is it slightly different? Yeah, I mean, kind of in the same thing. I guess we, maybe we'll sponsor it, pass it to you, but it doesn't have to follow the same thing. It would subject to hearings or a majority or two-thirds.
It's a regular bylaw, so Ryan would.
We'll cover that with him and see, see that what you get includes that as well as the rewrites, proposed rewrites that we're doing for the planning.
And if I may, we went through this with a solar permit process that went on for years. And by the time we got fed up with it, we realized that it was moot anyway because we changed members, new elections. Really, there was, I don't know if there were more than two of us that could have said anything about it because we'd all missed too many meetings. This is during hearings, not just meetings.
Right, no, it's here.
But still, it was that engine anyway.
I do read that applicants for permits and developers or whatever, that side of things, they like this to be in place because many a hearing has been derailed because we don't have a core of people who haven't missed one yet. So then it doesn't even, it has to start over again at everybody's expense. So it's almost, most all towns have adopted that are using it. So you'll see that when we get this stuff along to you. And the only other thing, it's the same process, and I just wanted to confirm, to offer the way I read it best, and I mean, you've said this is all this Chapter 40, Section 5, you know, the Mass Law, it hasn't changed, saying what happens to any zoning or rezoning proposal, you know, new or changed or whatever. And it's all the same thing. It can come from any number of places, like in this case, it's going to come to the Planning Board, come to you. It could come from boards selecting themselves who sponsor a change. It could come from an owner of land. It could come from petitioners. It could come from a regional planning authority, state, I suppose they can force things on your agenda like that. But anyway, they, any of those petitioners have the legal right to give the Select Board the proposal, obviously in specific form about this piece and that piece, and this is the new language. So I don't know who actually drafts all that out properly. But once it comes to the Select Board in good order, it seems, seems clear that within 14 days, it gets sent to the Planning Board, being a zoning. And then the Planning Board schedules hearings on the proposal, which is, I imagine, if you're going to change something from one use to another, that it would involve discussion about, well, what would that new use allow, and why is that a good or bad idea? So I think that's what the subject of the hearings would be. And then a vote after the hearings close, obviously, then a bunch of days if you need them or want them, up to 90 days. After the vote comes the public, the town meeting in this case. So the town meeting then votes within six months after the Planning Board holds public hearing. So that seems to be the process that would lead us to eventually where we're going to go. There's certainly misunderstandings elsewhere about why do you even have to consider them? Why do you even have to vote? You know, it's obviously, it's a, it's a well-spelled-out process, you know?
You got to follow the process.
Yeah, and there's certain timetables on the whole thing. And a certain right for any landowner, like I said, to petition whatever they want. But then the process, the dates, the hearings, the vote, you know, all of that is very well-spelled out. So in respect to that, the Planning Board has, we've reviewed these things, processes, we're going through them right now with the rewrites again. There will be hearings on that, that the Planning Board with its new chair and so forth, experienced, so they all are, will be doing. And we'll be also looking at the ethics stuff and making sure that whatever has to be done prior to any hearings, like that come to the Planning Board, that that's been taken care of. That's the process as we see it. So if there's anything I don't understand about that, then as I talk to the Planning Board about, about all of this, you know, I'd certainly want to tell them anything different that you all might know and I know. But that's, those are the things I want to cover.
And I think it spells it out pretty clearly.
Yeah, you'd think they'd come up against this time a few times before, because it's all pretty exact. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. That's no.
I got one, one of the new business. It's new, old's about Marty and his labor force. I don't know what we're going to need to do to get him some help, but we need to get him some help before we're looking to rebuild our whole department. So I don't know if we're going to have to offer more money to try to get some help for him. He's been working seven days a week for less over a month now. He's had it, so.
Where do you go to find somebody like that?
I, I suggested to him to try to poke somebody off of somebody else because honestly, right now, that's, that's how you get people. You basically have to go around and try to find somebody that will be willing to go do.
Step over for more money.
Step over for more money or, you know, something that they feel will benefit them. I mean, some people might not be, not realize he's looking for this, so I, I.
So we run an ad?
We have, I mean, we have, but yeah, we can again.
I'll put it, I can put it in MMA. That might, that's a place where, you know.
Maybe just leave dollar values out at this point. I think last time you put the range in it. We'll have to deal with that.
Put it in the newspaper, too. Let's put it in the Telegram and Gazette and wherever the news. Pick out somebody to vote.
We definitely have done that. The problem is that there isn't anybody because we're, you know, the whistle stop had to close four days a week because they don't have any staff. It's just hard. We have, we have a few, we have not many residents that need it.
If we're advertising in a statewide newspaper, you're not going to find somebody wanting to come in for the hours here unless they're local. And it's not stupid to be looking at local. I understand we don't pay. What do we pay?
I think it's like 22-ish.
Up to 24.50 for the supervisor, right?
That's a foreman position.
The foreman. The other position is, I think, 20.
You mean CBL?
Yeah, CBL, hydraulics, yeah.
For the, for the foreman, right? Not the laborer?
I think the laborer needs a CBL to go be.
Oh, to plow?
Plow, maybe.
And the hydraulics always good.
Maybe put it like the, you know, we're willing to train and get him those things. Put him, we get him, you know?
Yeah.
The problem is now it's getting close to winter.
Yeah, he's got two guys basically and himself. So he's, three of them basically trying to, and they're going to start that drainage project to green the tree shortly, and that's going to tie him up.
All right, so what do we do?
I, I agree with you. Let's put an ad out there again. Let's try to shake the bushes again, see if there's anybody. I'm kind of looking around at people I know that kind of work in the industry, but.
I tried poaching somebody from Palmer, but.
They're so, legitimately so busy right now that, I mean, if you're in the private sector, you're doing pretty well. I mean, if you want to be in the public sector and be guaranteed work year-round, and that's what you want to do, it's a little slower pace. With Marty, it really isn't.
No.
Not what Marty does.
Not here.
Not right now.
I don't know. I just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention that it's getting pretty bad there.
And if I may, you know, the current employees really aren't compensated well for what they do. The chainsaw work and the chipper work and the making your own gravel, I mean, they're really doing a lot more work than an average highway guy would be doing. I, I wanted to make that a goal of mine this year to try to bring the whole department.
Do we have a person on committee meeting?
No, but we can certainly put one together.
Most immediately.
Yeah.
Should we? I'm gone Monday through the 15th.
So we'll have to wait till after. Who gives us a calendar nearby, boy?
The second meeting in August. There is a TANEE calendar right there. Is the 28th?
We usually meet on a Wednesday.
For personnel, okay.
Yeah, 16th. Welcome back, Carter.
That's fine. Are we going to do it here or Zoom or?
Here you run. Do we, do we appoint him to the personnel?
It's automatic.
Oh, yeah. It was in the fine print, buddy.
Because you're on the board. Then that's Jen and Finance.
So we do it in the middle of the day or something?
We try to do it like five or something.
Oh, that's inconvenient for a lot of people.
I can do it by a phone.
Fine, whatever. Good. Five o'clock.
Do you want to do Zoom or?
Yeah, let's do Zoom. I mean, we could probably even do, if you really want to do four o'clock, I'd probably do Zoom, just stay at the office.
That's completely up to you.
And Jen would appreciate that too, I think.
That's what I'm thinking of, because she likes to.
She never had a, I mean, she always, she always showed up with bells on.
No, well, I haven't ever sat on a personal meeting.
So four? You want to do four?
It's two, four and 16.
Got it.
All right, I guess that's, if we get that stuff out there, we can, maybe we can ask Marty to come in and.
Yeah, I mean, we can start the, maybe the process of discussion, you know, where.
You know, let's invite him.
You know, I will just warn that you are opening Pandora's Box by.
I absolutely understand that.
So just beware.
It's, it's.
But I get it.
It's going to trickle down through everything eventually. We just, we got to keep picking one out of it. We can't afford to do everything at once.
That's true, and you've said that many times, and highway are really, I mean, just watching them over the past two years and seeing what they make is like, wow. What they do, what they're willing to do.
Yeah. Got to start somewhere.
Very impressive.
How big, well, we could wait for the meeting, but I mean, all of our payroll, how big a percentage is if our budget?
Probably the highest percentage.
For what highway?
School is, school's like 50.
Oh, other than school.
Right. I bet it's.
20.
The total budget, like 25.
Are we talking just highway?
No, no, no.
The whole.
All payroll.
Oh, payroll, just, oh, just salaries.
If you're talking about how we set up, this is a slippery slope.
Yeah, well, right.
It starts great. So it's everything. So everything.
Probably like 1.6 million, which is about half of it. I think we're about $3 million for the towns.
Right. Yeah, salary is probably a big piece of it.
It always is everywhere. Even the school, they have a $40 million budget, but 38 million of it is salary.
Bill?
If I may, just a couple of thoughts quick on fill in some of these spots. You mentioned advertising. Do we use the town newsletter for that? I mean, maybe. Good, right? And is there any provision or are you offering a finder's fee like some places do? If you send your friend in here, if they get hired, you get a five hundred bucks or something. Sometimes that makes somebody say, hey, look, they got an offer, you know.
Headhunters, headhunters.
Yeah, yeah. Not professional, but just a friend comes in as soon as they use, they sent you, then maybe just submit it.
We could put that up to Marty and his guys.
Yeah. Usually it makes someone stay, like, you put provision, they have to stay for so long.
Thirty years.
Three weeks would be good right now, probably.
Okay, so I'll get on that and I can get on some, you know.
Sit back on Facebook again.
I'll post it. It's on our website all the time, but I'll post it back up, put it in the papers and do some research on, you know, what a, what a good DPW person would be making.
There's no way that we can bump up pay until the next town meeting, right?
Unless he could find it in his budget, which.
If he doesn't replace everybody, I think he's too short.
If he got one, you know, strong candidate, then there's two salary items left in his budget that he's not filled right now.
Right, okay.
So there's some with that, right?
And that's what you can kind of use them to hire people.
Like here and there, right?
Right.
So I may or may not be at our next meeting and come home that day.
That's all right. Deducted from your salary.
I'd have a flat, have a flat tire.
7.50, I think it works out to be, missing meetings.
Seven dollars.
Seven dollars fifty cents, yeah. So we'll.
I may, I. We typically leave early, but if anything happens or it goes astray, then I may not be here. I'll keep you posted, though. I was thinking it was next, it was the 7th, but that's not, that's right, it's the 14th. So I may be here, but yeah, just a.
Yeah, we'll get a break, get an extra week off, hopefully. I know that we adjourn.
Second?
If it wasn't fair.
Hi.